Good evening, welcome to the 2018-2022 inaugural council meeting for the City of London. My name is Cathy Saunders and I am the Clerk for the City of London and assisting me tonight is Barb Westlake-Power, who's our Deputy Clerk, and somewhere in the crowd is Michael Shultis, who's our Manager of Legislative Services, and we have a number of City Clerk staff in attendance as well as assisting you to get to your seats. I would now ask you to all rise as the council comes into the room. Thank you, can all be seated now? We're very lucky tonight to have with us the Between the Keys, which is a jazz band comprised of Jen McIntyre, Cameron Berezink, and Tara Sampson. The jazz trio was created through the University of Western Ontario in 2013. London Arts Live, a program of London Arts Council, has made it possible for them to perform with us, for us, tonight, and I would ask you to, all of those who are able, to please stand for O Canada. The band can start O Canada if they're able. You may all be seated now, thank you. I'd like to call upon Council-elect Cassidy to provide the traditional land recognition.
Let us begin, let us begin by acknowledging that this event is taking place on the treaty territory of the Anishnaabek, which is defined within the pre-confederation treaty known as the London Township Treaty of 1796. Throughout time, this region has also become the current home to the Haudenosaunee and the Lenin-Lenape nations. I would also like to recognize the three First Nations communities neighboring the City of London: Chipewas of the Thames First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames, and Munsee Delaware Nation; Mi'kmaq, Yawangko, Anishnik. Thank you.
I'd like to invite Irene Matheson, Member of Federal Parliament, to bring greetings.
Thank you very much, Councilor Cassidy, for acknowledging those who lived on this land before us and who currently honor this land by remaining caretakers of this land. Mesdames et messieurs, honored guests, good evening, bonsoir. It is my pleasure and truly an honor to bring greetings from the Parliament of Canada and to personally extend sincere congratulations to the 2018-22 Mayor and Council for the City of London. You have been entrusted with the privilege of managing the affairs of our great city, maintaining and upholding the public services on which our communities depend, but most importantly, you have been asked by your fellow citizens to serve on behalf of everyone from every walk of life. You are servant leaders who will and must remember those among us who are vulnerable, elderly, and those who struggle with poverty. You will be required to listen with patience, see with kindness, and speak with understanding. I am confident that you will fulfill the role that you have been entrusted to carry out with integrity, courage, and above all, humility. You are the government that is closest to the people. There will be challenges ahead, and you will rise to the occasion. There will be problems ahead, and you will resolve those problems through your collective wisdom. This is the beginning of great times for Londoners and the City of London. Higher goals and the willingness to serve brought you to this place. I wish you well. Merci, thank you, and megwich.
Thank you. We also acknowledge with thanks the communications received from the federal members of parliament noted on the council agenda, and as well, we acknowledge with thanks the communications received from the members of provincial parliament noted on the council agenda. I would like to invite Mayor-elect Holder to come up and express appreciations to the community and government representatives in attendance.
It's interesting when they even open the book for you, that's very, very nice. Thank you Cathy, and ladies and gentlemen, what a delight it is to be here. It's my privilege to make certain acknowledgements of some of our special guests. Certainly, we have special guests of our councillors, and all of you are special guests by virtue of being here tonight. Irene Matheson, Member of Parliament, thank you so much for your kind comments, and we wish you well in your pending retirement as we offer you and Keith some deserved time together. May I also thank Josh Chadwick, I'm really grateful, Josh, that you're here tonight, on behalf of my friend Peter Fraschiscatos, the Member of Parliament in London North Centre and Member of Government. We've had a number of meetings and very grateful for the time that he has given us. Ladies and gentlemen, we have several mayors here tonight, a couple of past mayors, three of them, Mayor Anne-Marie de Seco-Best, and Joe Fontana, and Matt Brown, please help me acknowledge them here tonight, thank you. And we have two regional mayors who have joined us tonight, Ina Devit, Mayor of Middlesex Centre, and Alison Warwick, the Mayor of Thames Centre. We are so delighted, thank you for making this evening so very special. And tonight doesn't happen unless there was a council preceding us. I've acknowledged Mayor Matt Brown, but also with us tonight, we're so delighted to bring that, that history forward, and I'm not saying that because I would suggest that Harold Usher is old, he is not, but Harold is here tonight, and Tanya Park is here tonight, thank you very much for gracing us, we appreciate it, thank you. And there are so many that we would like to acknowledge, and there are a few, if you would allow me to recognize, from Western University, Dr. Amit Chakma, Reverend Dr. Jeff Crittenden, from our City Hall neighborhood, neighbor Metropolitan United Church, Peter Devlin, the President of Fanchow College, from St. Paul's Cathedral, we have the very Reverend Paul Millward, from St. Peter's Basilica, Father Jim Mockler, from the Islamic Centre of Southwestern Ontario, Dr. Hassan Mustafa, we have the Bishop of Huron, the Right Reverend Linda Nichols, we have the President of the Almaty Centre, Yasir Raruvani, we have the President of the Gurwada Sahib Sikh Society, Harshim Ram Singh Rayat, we have Glenn Pearson and Jane Roy, co-executive directors of the London Food Bank with their wonderful family, we have Purveen Skinner from the Thames Valley District School Board, and dear friends like Andy and Helen Spree who have given so much to the community. Ladies and gentlemen, and we're so grateful that you all came here tonight, and thank you for doing that. And from our own City Hall, we have the Presidents of QP 107, and QP 101, the SEIU, and the London Police Service, we are grateful that you come and join us tonight. We also have Brian Hill from the Namarind Friendship Centre, and so pleased that you are here. London's boards and commissions are exceptionally well represented tonight, and we welcome the CEOs and board chairs of a number of organizations, the Covent Garden Market, the Housing Development Corporation, the Hyde Park Business Association, the Literacy Link South Central, the London Chamber of Commerce, the London Convention Centre, the Middlesex London Health Unit, the London Middlesex Housing Corporation, the London Police Services Board, the London Public Library, the London Transit Commission, the Middlesex London Emergency Medical Services Team, the Middlesex London Food Policy Council, the Old East Village BIA, Tourism London, the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority, and Western Fair District. And I know when we have the opportunity to provide a list of such notables, that there will be a few that we may have missed, so if you're here and, and we've missed you, please accept my personal apologies, but we thank all of you for being here as our guests tonight. We acknowledge you and appreciate so much for making this a very special evening. And ladies and gentlemen, to all of you, on behalf of our incoming council, we are grateful that you are sharing special memories with us tonight, so very, very grateful, thank you.
At this time, we will be asking each councillor individually to come up and take their declaration of oath, and we will meet Council-elect Mayor Holder in the middle of the room, please.
I, Ed Holder, having been elected to the office of Mayor in the municipality of the City of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise my office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward, or promise thereof, for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will bear faith and true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if it was made under oath. So help me God.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mayor Ed Holder. Michael Van Holst.
I'm Michael Van Holst, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of the City of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Ladies and gentlemen, councillor Van Holst. Shaun Lewis.
I, Shaun Lewis, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of the City of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Ladies and gentlemen, councillor Lewis. Mo Mohammed Salih.
I, Mohammed Salih, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of the City of London, Ontario, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truthfully, truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interests, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that this is the same force and effect if made under oath.
Ladies and gentlemen, councillor Salih. Jessie Helmer.
I, Jessie Helmer, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of the City of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Ladies and gentlemen, councillor Helmer. Maureen Cassidy.
I, Maureen Cassidy, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of the City of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will bear faithful and true allegiance, I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Ladies and gentlemen, councillor Cassidy. Philip Squire.
I, Philip Squire, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of the City of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Ladies and gentlemen, councillor Squire. Josh Morgan.
I, Josh Morgan, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of the City of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially execute this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Ladies and gentlemen, councillor Morgan. Steve Lehman.
I, Steve Lehman, have, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of the City of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Ladies and gentlemen, councillor Lehman. Anna Hopkins.
I, Anna Hopkins, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of the City of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as made under oath.
Ladies and gentlemen, councillor Hopkins. Paul van Meerbergen.
I, Paul van Meerbergen, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of the City of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Ladies and gentlemen, councillor Paul van Meerbergen. Stephen Turner. Stephen Turner.
I, Stephen Turner, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of the City of London, do solemnly promise to declare that I will fully and faithfully and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty the Queen Elizabeth II, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously, believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Ladies and gentlemen, Counselor Turner. Elizabeth Palosa.
I, Elizabeth Palosa, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of the City of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously, believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Ladies and gentlemen, Counselor Palosa. Ariel Kayabaga.
I, Ariel Kayabaga, have been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of the City of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, and I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously, believing it to be true, knowing that it is the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Ladies and gentlemen, Counselor Kayabaga. Steve Hillier.
Hi, Steve Hillier, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of the City of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will faithfully and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously, believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as made under oath.
Ladies and gentlemen, Counselor Hillier. And ladies and gentlemen, your 2018 to 2022 Municipal Council for the City of London. I'd like to invite Glenn Pearson to come forward. Mr. Pearson is a community activist and a former member of parliament. He has contributed to our London community for more than three decades as a firefighter for 30 years and as a director of the London Food Bank for 32 years. Mr. Pearson will invest the mayor's chain of office.
The chain of office is a long-held British tradition and considered by many to be an enduring symbol of municipal leadership. The chain, the mayor's chain of office, features 15 medallions interspersed with bars engraved with the names of London's previous mayors. The city's coat of arms is front and center, suspended below the Union Jack, and displays the motto "Through Labor and Perseverance." Between the Union Jack and the rose positioned at the top of the chain, six medallions on each shoulder depict the peony, London's official flower, Canada's coat of arms, the maple leaf, which is the symbol of Canada, a tree representative of the Forest City, Ontario's coat of arms used by the Lieutenant Governor of Ontario, and a shield comprised of the old coats of arms of nine Canadian provinces. Mr. Holder asked me to take on this responsibility tonight as an average citizen amongst my many peers that are here this evening, but I did want to add one thing. We want a really meaningful city, and we want to have a meaningful engagement with our city council. We just don't want a city that is great. We want one that's good. We don't want just a city that's exceptional. We want one that's equal. We don't want to be just smart as a city. We wish to be sustainable as well. We want wealth, but we want it with meaningful work. We want homes and lovely homes, but we want homes for all, for every Londoner. And we want leaders who can follow and followers who can lead. This we ask of our council. Now I ask if Mayor Holder would meet me in the middle, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pearson. I'd like the Sergeant-at-Arms to come forward, please. The Sergeant-at-Arms is going to place the mace. The mace represents the authority and power of London's Municipal Council. The ceremonial mace is an ornamented staff made of silver. The mace is carried by the Sergeant-at-Arms, who leads the mayor's procession into the council chambers at the commencement of each council meeting. The mace rests on a stand immediately in front of the mayor's seat in the council chambers. When council is in session, the mace is raised by the Sergeant-at-Arms to the highest position on the stand. When council is adjourned, recessed, or resolved into closed session, the mace is lowered. The mace is removed from the council chambers when council is not in session. And I now like to call upon Mayor Holder to bring the meeting into order. Now invite Mayor Holder to bring his inaugural address.
The first meeting of the 2018-2022 Municipal Council is called to order.
Fellow councillors, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen all, thank you to all of you who have joined us here to mark our inaugural meeting. Let me start by expressing our collective gratitude for your support. To our families, our friends, and fellow Londoners, we are here to mark a beginning. And as I do so, I would like to pay special thanks to my dear friend Glenn Pearson, who invested me tonight. One could not have a better friend or a more committed Londoner, and I am grateful for Glenn and Jane and their family for the support that they have given to London over many decades. And while you honor us as a council, we honor all of you. And if I might say, to London's most giving family, thank you for all that you do for us. Thank you. So tonight, we come together, not as individuals, but as your council, elected to serve this community and to work together to build our city for you and over the next four years. We come with diverse backgrounds. We come with diverse experiences, and we come with diverse perspectives on the way to move London forward. But what we all have in common is a commitment to serve, and through this commitment, I know that our debates will be healthy, our dialogue will be rich, and our decisions will be well considered. Every member of council has a deep understanding that we are accountable. We are accountable to Londoners. We are accountable to the broader community, to be stewards and to build on the many great things that define London. And we are accountable to each other, to work as a cohesive council guided by the best interests of the people we serve in our wards, and to act in the best interests of the city. We've already been working hard, and as I've gotten to know my colleagues on council, I am so energized. The people before you are passionate, deeply committed, engaged in our community. Your council members are people who are ready and willing to work and serve you. To that end, among the priorities, we'll be setting the strategic plan and determining the multi-year budget that will fund that plan. You know, as we listen to Londoners, it is your thoughts, your concerns, and your hopes that we will bring forward as we build our plan. We will engage the community and encourage all Londoners to tell us about their priorities as we set the course for our term on council. But building a city isn't about four years in isolation. Each council builds on the work of the council that precedes it. With that in mind, it is important to thank and acknowledge the work of our previous council. Your love for our city is clear. You've been unwavering in your work to build a better London, and I ask everyone now to join me in thanking the 2014-2018 council and former Mayor Matt Brown for the foundation they have set for us as we take office this evening. Thank you. Over the next four years, our promise is that we will continue to move London forward. We will face the issues that challenge us head-on and look for solutions that make London a better place, not just over these next four years, but for generations to come. My commitment to you is this: In all we do, we will focus on doing right by our community. Ours is an important journey. It is a journey that will have challenges, creating jobs and strengthening the economy, improving transportation, and supporting London's most vulnerable, to name a few. I also believe that it is a journey that is filled with opportunity. So to my council colleagues, tonight we are standing on the brink of that opportunity, and I know we are humbled by the trust that has been placed in us, and we are honored to be here with all of you tonight. I am convinced that this council has the experience and the wisdom to bring Londoners together, to face our challenges together, and through our collective efforts, to keep our city moving towards our vision of being a leader in commerce, culture, caring, and innovation. That journey begins tonight. That journey begins now. This is the point where we ask for a disclosure of pecuniary interest of councillors, and I would ask, does any member of council have a pecuniary interest to disclose? That's a very good start. See none. Our next act will be the appointment of deputy mayor, and I am looking for a motion with respect to the appointment of deputy mayor. I understand that councillor Mo Salih would like to move that motion, and I'm pleased to second it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move the following motion, that on the recommendation of the mayor, the appointment of councillor Jessie Helmer as deputy mayor for the City of London for a term commencing on December 3, 2018, and ending on November 30, 2020, to carry out such responsibilities as set out and as provided for the in-council policy appointment of deputy mayor policy and the council procedure bylaw be approved.
That motion has been seconded. Does anyone wish to speak to the motion? Yes. Absolutely. A request for a recorded vote has been put forth, and that will be the case. Does anyone wish to speak to the motion? Then I will call the question, and this will be a recorded vote, starting on my far right. Councillor Van Holst. Councillor Lewis.
Yay.
Councillor Salih.
Yay.
Councillor Helmer.
Yay.
That's a very good thing. Councillor Cassidy.
Yay.
Councillor Squire. Councillor Morgan.
Yay.
Councillor Lehman.
Yay.
Councillor Hopkins.
Yay.
Councillor Van Mirbergen.
No.
Councillor Turner.
Yay.
Councillor Palosa.
Yay.
Councillor Kayabaga.
Yay.
Councillor Hillier.
Nay.
Mayor Holder, yay. Ladies and gentlemen, the motion carries. Congratulations, Deputy Helmer. Now, at this point, I'm looking for a motion to receive the communication list on the added agenda. So moved by councillor Lewis, seconded by councillor Hopkins. And the motion will read that the communications submitted, as noted on the added agenda, be received. Would anyone like to speak to the motion? See none. I will call the question. All those in favor. Carried. Thank you. Bylaws, and this is the portion where we will be going through three readings of bylaws, and we have two bills to go through. And I'm looking for a motion for the first reading of bill number one, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting held here on the third day of December 2018. Do I have a mover? Moved by councillor Morgan. Do I have a seconder? Maureen, councillor Cassidy. Thank you. Then I will call the question. All those in favor. Opposed? Carried. This is now the second reading for that same bill, and I'm looking for a motion for the second reading of bill number one, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting held on the third day of December 2018, moved by councillor Van Holst, seconded by councillor Hopkins. Any comments or questions on second reading? Now, by the way, for the benefit of those, you will note that we did not ask for comments or questions on the first, nor
or questions on the first, nor will we on the third reading. But on the second reading, just to let you know, there is an opportunity for members of council to speak to the motion. Anyone wish to speak to it? Then I will call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Now, I'm looking for a motion for the third reading of bill number one, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting held on the third day of December 2018, moved by councillor Hillier, seconded by councillor Sally. I will call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Ladies and gentlemen, the motion carries. That is the first bylaw of this council that has been approved. That was pretty straightforward. There we go. Congratulations. Now, the second bill bylaw that we are dealing with tonight is a motion for the first reading of bill number two, being a bylaw to appoint the deputy mayor for the City of London and to repeal bylaw number A7270712, being a bylaw to appoint a deputy mayor as selected by the mayor for the City of London. So, in this case here, I am looking for a mover. That would be councillor Sally, seconded by councillor Cassidy. And I will call the question. Those in favor? Those opposed? That is carried. Now, I am looking for a motion for the second reading of bill number two, being a bylaw to appoint a deputy mayor for the City of London and to repeal bylaw number A72702-12, being a bylaw to appoint a deputy mayor as selected by the mayor for the City of London. I am looking for a mover. I have that in-- sorry, thank you. Councillor Turner and councillor Sally are seconding. Any comments or questions with respect to second reading? Seeing none. I will call the question. Those in favor? Those opposed? The motion carries. We're getting the rhythm of this now, I think so. Now, could I please ask for a motion for the third reading of bill number two, being a bylaw to appoint a deputy mayor for the City of London and to repeal bylaw number A7207-12, being a bylaw to appoint a deputy mayor as selected by the mayor for the City of London? I'm looking for a mover, please. Yes, thank you. That's councillor Palloza, and seconded by councillor Cassidy. Now I will call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. Now, this, you might think, is the favorite part of the motions for council, so I'll look for a motion to adjourn. I've got that from councillor Squire. Shorter meetings, I like it, and seconded by councillor Van Holst. All those in favor? The first meeting of the 2018-22 municipal council is adjourned. Thank you all.
I'd ask that the caller guard enter the stage and escort council from the room. After council has left the room, we would invite you to join them in the room next door for reception. Thank you. Good evening.